Madison County Board of Education. First on our agenda, Ms. Brock was going to share with us her vision.
Madison County schools, in partnership with the community, strive to equip educators and students with the skills to lead by example, develop and speak with a unique voice, and explore their academic curiosity to make a positive impact on our community and world.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is our showcase with Kirksville Elementary School.
So Kirksville Elementary is our first school on the showcase tonight, and Ms. Trista Heron's class from Kirksville will be singing "The Lion Sleeps Tonight" and "50 Nifty United States." Students Delaney Gabbard and Isaac Bysh will be playing for us. Delaney will play a ukulele solo, and Isaac will play the piano.
And in between our songs, Addison Wilcox will announce them.
Our first number is "The Lion Sleeps Tonight." Isaac will be playing the keyboard, and Delaney Gabbard will be playing ukulele.
In the jungle, the white jungle, the lion sleeps tonight. In the jungle, the white jungle, the lion sleeps tonight. We're the village of peaceful village, the lion sleeps tonight. We're the village, the white village, the lion sleeps tonight. Oh, my darling, don't fear, my darling, the lion sleeps tonight. Oh, my darling, don't fear, my darling, the lion sleeps tonight.
Good job![233.15][233.15](applause)
There's some talent there. Delaney has a beautiful voice.
Delaney Gabbard will be singing a melody of patriotic songs. Oh, beautiful, for spacious skies, for amber waves of grain, for purple mountain majesties above the fruity plain. America, America, great shit his grace on thee, and crown the good with brotherhood from sea to shining sea. Land where my fathers died, land of the pilgrims' pride, from every mountainside, and freedom re. We will now conclude our performance with "50 Nifty United States."
(coughing) Sorry. Bad problems here. There we go.
(music) Fifty nifty United States from thirteen original colonies. Fifty nifty, starting a flag that glows so beautifully in the green. Each individual state contributes a body that is great. Each individual state deserves a bounty a little bit now. Fifty nifty United States from thirteen original colonies. Tell 'em, tell 'em, tell all about 'em, one by one, till they give nothing to every state in the U.S.A. Alabama, Alaska, Arizona, Arkansas, California, Colorado, Connecticut, Delaware, Florida, Georgia, Hawaii, Idaho, Illinois, Indiana. Iowa, Kansas, Kentucky, Louisiana, Maryland, Massachusetts, Michigan. Minnesota, Minnesota, Missouri, Montana, Nebraska, Nevada. New Hampshire, New Jersey, New York, New York, Oklahoma, Oklahoma, Oregon, Pennsylvania, Rhode Island, South Carolina, South Dakota, Tennessee, Texas. Utah, Vermont, Virginia, Washington, Western Virginia, Wisconsin, Wyoming. Alabama, Alaska, Arizona, Arkansas, California, Colorado, Connecticut, Delaware, Florida, Georgia, Hawaii, Idaho, Illinois, Indiana. Iowa, Kansas, Kentucky, Louisiana, Maryland, Maryland, Massachusetts, Michigan. Minnesota, Minnesota, Missouri, Montana, Nebraska, Nevada. New Hampshire, New Jersey, New York, New York, Oklahoma, Oklahoma, Oregon, Pennsylvania, South Carolina, South Dakota, Tennessee, Texas. Utah, Vermont, Virginia, Washington, Western Virginia, Wisconsin, Wyoming. North, south, east, west, new car, no checkered up in it. Kentucky is the best of the fifty nifty United States from thirteen original colonies. Tell 'em, tell 'em, tell all about 'em, one by one, till they give nothing to every state
Yes, thank you very much. Really certainly appreciate Kirksville Elementary there. Great job. And while they're breaking down, I also want to... Mr. Ben Wilcox back there, State School Security Marshal. So we're very fortunate to have him in the district, but now he's not here playing the State Security Marshal. He is here playing Addison's dad.
Off the block, thank you.
That's exactly right. But he's been a tremendous asset to our county as we push forward with school safety, and we really appreciate everything that he's doing with us. So, thank you. Next for our showcase is going to be Clark Moores Middle School. And this evening, the eighth graders from Clark Moores will be presenting the STEM activities that they're participating in during Mr. Troy Blankenship's class. They're also working in partnership with Gear Up. Please welcome Izzy Jones, Alex Machelli, Gavin Plowman, Connor Smith, Destiny Wright, and Jackson Young. Mr. Blankenship.
Thank you. As Mr. Gilliam stated, my name is Troy Blankenship, and I am the past coach at Clark Moores, as well as I teach one STEM class to our eighth grade students. STEM has been an outstanding asset, I believe, to our related arts program. Mr. Ray approached me. We were trying to decide, I knew I was going to be teaching one class, you know, what maybe we could do to really get our eighth grade students involved in some stuff that, you know, is hands-on, and some things that may be fun for the students. And, you know, he said, "Well, how about STEM?" Well, being a science teacher, you know, I said, "Hey, that's a great idea. Let's do STEM. We can do some really cool things with that." And with the help of our Gear Up program, we have Ms. Blue with us tonight from Gear Up. Ms. Blue, Ms. Ramsey, Ms. Stamper, and Ms. Brown. Our Gear Up program funded a field trip for us to take to Lexington, to Newton's Attic, which our students will share that with you, some of their experiences at Newton's Attic. Really cool place, a lot of hands-on stuff, and they got to do some really neat things there. Our Gear Up program has also recently ordered some 10 TI Inspire calculators for us to use in class, as well as five Innovator Hub launchpads, and five Innovator rovers that we will be using and incorporating in our STEM class this nine weeks. Unfortunately, this group behind us didn't get to do those things, but the students for the rest of the year will get to participate in those activities. And, you know, engineering, for those of you who don't know, the STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. We really hit the engineering concept hard within our class, and not only the, you know, the field trip that we took, we're going to share with you, but maybe a couple other things that we've done in class as well. So I'll let them take over and share some things that we've done in class. Is the PowerPoint available?
(inaudible)
Connor?
Hello?
Connor, why don't you come over here, we can talk. My mic is a little damaged.[845.12][845.12](laughing)
Um, so the first thing... Oh, that's the wrong one. Here is a picture of a robot that can pinpoint where someone is needing surgery, and it was donated to Newton's Attic. It is called the Kuka Robot Six. This was used for hospitals and radio surgery, and is now used for complex projects.
Okay, this is the Spintron. It was at Newton's Attic. So basically, how it works is a guy would spin it, and depending on how fast you spin, that was how fast you went, like you went in all different directions. And it was, and it's also, it was used as a NASA multi-access trainer used by astronauts. Well, it's like, it's not, it's not from NASA, but they just made, they just put it like around, and it's for, and it's a simulation for capsule tumbling.
Okay, so this is the ballista. I don't know if it shows this on the PowerPoint, but the Egyptians first came up with the idea for necessarily a catapult. The ballista, there is a bunch of wires and rubber in it, and there's a crank. If you crank it, it will make the wires and rubbers separate, or not necessarily separate, but stretch, and then when you let it go, it shoots things up into the air. The ballista is an ancient missile weapon that launched a large project at a distant target, and it was first developed with the Greeks.
This is the G-Force. It was a, it's kind of like a roller coaster, but it's not. You would pull a rope backwards, and everybody got to do a group while we were there, and when you pulled it backwards, there was a machine that, that one of the workers would use, and then after you pulled the rope so far, you go back, and then you can watch the person get launched up, and then it goes backwards, and it does it about three times. See, the G-Force was a machine that uses a bundle of bungee cords stretched by a simple machine attached to a hook on the underside of a rolling car carrying the rider. It is powered by the people who are pulling the rope to cause the machine to move.
Okay, next we made paper rockets. We made them out of like these like paper tube things and hot glued them together. And, yeah, so like we made them, and then we later launched them with compressed air, and they went high. Yeah.
We did a Lucid Chart program, and Lucid Chart is a website where you can like plan out houses, and we later built some houses out of balzawood. Here's some pictures of those. Oh, sorry, diagrams of those, which we later built. And then, these are some of the buildings that students made with those diagrams. Other projects we did in our STEM class, we created a, some kind of structure, and then wired it with circuits, and then we also put switches into them so we could like turn on and on lights inside of them and stuff like that. We researched bridges and built models out of them with toothpicks, and on Roblox Studio, we created a little game using the Roblox software. And that is it.[1123.16][1123.16](applause)
Very impressive what they learn now.
Gear Up is incredible.
Now we'll move on to our recognition.
All right, staff recognition. This month's Sparkling School Award is being presented to Whitehall Elementary. Custodians Richard Shanks, Dennis Rose, and Robert Wilson have done an outstanding job this fall keeping Whitehall in beautiful condition for the staff and students. Congratulations to our October Sparkling School Award winners, Whitehall Elementary.[1168.01][1168.01](applause) Okay, also for our staff recognition, you know, we've been doing the Sparkling School Award to our custodial maintenance desk for a while now, and we wanted to also recognize the folks in our food service staff. And so Mr. Anderson and some of his folks came up with a series of awards. Instead of getting the same one every, every month, they have a variety throughout the, throughout the year. So for September and October, the competition was Best Cooks with Books. And the winners of the Best Cooks with Books event for September and October is Kit Carson Elementary.[1259.43][1259.43](applause) And next for our staff recognition, the National Association of Secondary School Principals recently recognized Madison Southern High School Principal, Mr. Brandon Watkins, as the Kentucky Secondary Principal of the Year. As Principal of the Year, Mr. Watkins, along with 49 other state winners, attended an award ceremony at the 2019 NASP Principals Institute in Washington, DC. Congratulations to Mr. Watkins on his well-deserved honor.[1324.82][1324.82](applause)
Next on our agenda is audience comments concerning the agenda items. Do we have any? Okay. So we'll move on with our consent agenda. Are there any questions about the consent agenda? We've had this for a little over a week now. If not, the consent agenda consists of the minutes of the September 24th meeting, claims, the superintendent's personnel actions, leaves of absence, and the following out-of-state trips. Madison Central High School junior ROTC trip to Jamestown, Tennessee, October 25th and 26th. Madison Central High School FFA trips to Indianapolis, Indiana, October the 29th through the 3rd. Madison Southern High School FFA trip to Indianapolis, October the 29th through the 2nd. Clark Moores trip to Chicago, Illinois, November 1st and 2nd. Clark Moores Middle School Dance Team trip to Collville, Tennessee, on November 2nd. Madison Southern High School AFJ ROTC trip to Memphis, Tennessee, November 13th through the 15th. Madison Central High School Band trip to New York City to participate in the Macy Thanksgiving Day Parade, November 24th through the 30th. Madison Southern High School Varsity Girls Basketball Team trip to Sevierville, Tennessee, December 27th through the 30th. Clark Moores Dance Team trip to Orlando, Florida, January the 30th through February 2nd of 2020. Madison Central High School Dance Team trip to Orlando, Florida, March 6th through the 10th of 2020. And consent approves the Madison Central High School Baseball Team trip to Niceville, Florida, April 4th through the 10th. We also have justification for the charter bus use, review of the procedure 03.123 AP2, review of the wellness plan, and shortened school day applications for four students as presented. Is there any questions? Not, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Burford.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Brock. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Moving on to our action agenda. 7A is to create and ratify a 1.0 pair position at Kirksville Elementary School. Do we need to explain anything? You're okay with that? We've had, we've had time, we've had these for a while, and we've had notes, and Mr. Gilliam has sent us explanations, so we kind of know what already is happening, but it's a pair educator position. So if there's no other conversation, we have a motion to create and ratify a 1.0 pair education position at Kirksville Elementary. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rutherford. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. 7B is to create and ratify the 1.0 kindergarten teacher position at Kirksville Elementary School. That goes along with that pair.
Yes, this, yeah, well, the next pair is the, is what goes along with kindergarten, so yeah. Increase enrollment in kindergarten students.
If there's not any questions...
So moved.
Motion is to create the, and ratify the 1.0 kindergarten position at Kirksville Elementary School by Mr. Rutherford. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Brock. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. 7C is to create a 1.0 kindergarten pair position at Kirksville again. Do we have any questions? And recommend a motion to create and ratify the 1.0 kindergarten pair educator position at Kirksville Elementary.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Burford. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. 7D, approve agreement for cooperation, cooperation and full utilization of the Head Start. Do you want to explain anything with this one?
I will be glad to. Head Start is a federal program, and, and as such, for us to draw down preschool funding through the state preschool program, we must first, the requirements of that is that we first must have full utilization of the, of the local Head Start brand. And so we do not operate Head Start. Head Start is a federal program that's awarded through a bid process to someone, to another provider within our community, and so we enter into an agreement with them just to make sure that we agree on, on all of the pieces of that. We do have some blended classrooms where we share some teachers and staff, and then we also share the revenue that comes in off of those. So, but this is just our annual agreement for that.
If there's not any questions, the motion would be to approve the 2019-20 local Head Start memorandum of agreement of service contract, cooperation, and full utilization of Head Start.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Rutherford. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Burford. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. 70, approve the 2021 calendar committee. This is just a formality that we have to do, where we have to get committee, people through the school and the community together.
Yes.
And this is the time they're going to gather it.
It seems like everybody's the same, right? Is that what you do?
Pretty much. The, you know, the composition of the committee is spelled out statute, so, and I'm not sure if we have, I think everyone is the same as what we had, we had last year. If not, it is, and it's correct. I thought so as well, yes. So I didn't think we had any changes.
And we are going to try to approve that earlier than we have been.
Yes, that's, that's the reason we're approving this calendar committee now, because one of the things that, in conversation with the stakeholders throughout, both their teachers and also, you know, our community members, they, they're asking that we get that calendar out a little, little earlier. Hopefully by January 1st, we're able to do that, so people can plan their vacations. We know, we have a lot of folks that work in organizations where they have to put in for those days off, starting January 1st, so they, the folks with seniority put in January 1st, and if we don't have our calendar ready, they're either taking a guess, or they're having to hold out. So this will hopefully be able to do that.
And the committee will give the recommendation to you, which you'll bring to the board to approve, right?
Right, that's correct, yes.
Okay. So the motion again is to approve the 2021 calendar committee as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Rutherford. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cobb. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And we've all put in our requests for a week of fall break.
You like that, huh?
Just a little bit.
7F, approve technology activity report. Mr. Cecil's going to give that to us.
The technology activity report's something we do every year. It's basically, when we put, when we make a technology purchase, we put certain commodity codes on it, depending if it's a student device, or software, or printer, whatever it is. This just pulls all those purchases from the past year, and then we send that to the state, and they use it for various reporting and funding. state, and they use it for various reporting and funding calculations and that kind of thing. So, it's presented to you to, if you have any questions, and then, once you accept it, then we sign a couple of pages, and we send it back up to KDE.
So, this is just a reporting procedure? Any questions?
It was pretty straightforward.
Yeah. So, the recommended motion would be to approve the District Technology Activity Report, which is called the TAO now, as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Brock. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rutherford. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
It's probably the easiest one you've done, isn't it?
For sure.
Next is our Instruction Report, and Ms. Hunter will be giving that to us. It's kind of a continuation of last month.
Or two.
Okay. I'm going to look that up. I'm going to give you a paper copy of some of the slides in this show, just so it may be more comfortable for you to look at this way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the state only gave a few stars away, but I thought it might be appropriate for us to just look at all these stars together before we get started here. Because I think we need to look at all the stars when we go. But that's all we're going to say about stars tonight. Because, hmm, gee. Shouldn't have said stars. Okay.
Any stars?
Okay, well, he's doing this. The first slide I have is the, because what I want to show you tonight, I want to show you how the district compared to the state. Because that is what I want us to look at tonight. Because in the newspaper, we've already seen individual school scores, but I think it's important for us to look at how the district overall had a comparison to our state. Because we did really well, and we've already talked over and over again about how incredibly proud we are of our schools, of our teachers, of our students. So, let's look. And so, I just want to remind you how each of them are calculated. So, I put it on our slide, and it's on here. So, we're going to look at proficiency, because this is elementary first. We'll look at elementary first. And so, those indicators we have are reading and math that go in to make the proficiency score. Then we have the separate academic indicator, and that's science, social studies, and the on-demand writing. Then we have growth, and that's reading and math combined. And then we have the overall score. So, here's how we did compared to the state. And you'll see, we did pretty well. We did pretty well. As we typically do. As we typically do. So, then we'll go on, and all of these are from K-Prep. All of these are from K-Prep. And K-Prep only, right? K-Prep only. K-Prep only in elementary and middle. K-Prep only in elementary and middle. And then our ready is a great indicator of that. Then we'll move on to middle school. Middle school is exactly the same. And so, you'll see that we did really well there. So, again, proficiency, that comes straight from reading and math. The separate academic indicator, we have science, social studies, and again, the on-demand writing. And then that growth is the reading and math combined, and that is just, because last year we can't compare anything from previous years. And again, next year, we'll have something different, but that is just those scores combined together, how a student is growing. And then we have our overall index there.
If they don't change another indicator.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Again, like I said, last year was different, and I told you last year, we'd have something different to talk about. Next year, we'll still have something a little different to talk about. But what we know and can hold true to is that our students are growing, and that's what we focus on. And we have indicators all along the way, all year long, that students know that. And that is what the most important thing is. Our teachers know that, but our students know that they are growing and progressing. And then high school. High school looks a little bit different, because we have different tests to measure that. The proficiency score from, with our high school, comes in from the ACT. The reading and math part does. Science and writing, that comes from K-Prep. And then that transition score comes from ACT. In transition, they just want to know that we're ready, and we've got that skills, knowledge, and disposition to kind of go to that next level, and that's where that score comes from. Then we have our graduation rate, and then our overall indicator. But again, you can see compared to the state, we're doing really well. Doing really well.
Any questions for Ms. Hunter? No questions.
Thank you for putting all this together.
Yes, it's very clean and easy to, to mention.
I mean, we all know we're doing well.
We do.
And personally, I don't judge anything by one thing. You know, we, but it's still great scores. But it's not the only. It's not the only.
I'm just happy that I don't talk about stars.
Nope.
Not saying stars.
But it's, but this is great.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next, we will do our Construction Report with Tony Thomas, cloud filter semi-car architect. He's going to give us something good, or we're just going to have to put him on the back burner?
No, that's a microphone. Oh, she's in control, as usual. Thank you for your help in advance, Jeannie. Good evening. Couple of projects nearing completion. That would include the Kindergarten Academy at Mayfield. Of course, I think everybody drives by there, of course, and sees the progress, but this was a couple of days ago, grass growing, nice black pavement finish, that's looking up, and you can see CSEP buses in the background there. And the next picture will show people on tall skilts taking pictures. That's the entry there. The gate was going in, of course, I just came from there, and the gate's in now, so. But yeah, and the next picture's just a little bit, if you see some, there's some drainage that didn't work out, and Allen Company's going to help the car lot people with some underground drainage. So, if you see some more work there, they're just tying in some drainage and helping the drainage along the road there. But that's, of course, right at the entry. And this picture's about a week old, but it shows the light poles that the owner is putting in, so you can see they've gone up, and they'll be running the wires and putting the heads on there. But of course, the grass is growing there now. And the next picture will show where the fence row has been cleaned out. This is towards the back, between the CSEP and where the hotel used to be. So, really cleaning up there. Again, grass is growing there today. And the next picture shows the buses, and that was from yesterday. You can see the grass growing there. There's some gravel up there where the buses will park for, hopefully, not too many more years. And that's just a picture looking back down. Of course, that's, they've got half the striping down there tonight, so they've even done some more work since yesterday. So, it's nearing completion. And I think the last picture's just, this is the area over towards the Kindergarten Academy where you all actually put some more pavement, and they put a top coat over that part of the parking lot and made it look really good as well. Any other questions on, any questions on the Kindergarten Academy?
So, what's our deadline to start using this?
Well, that's a good question. As soon, when they get done with that drainage out front, I think they'll finish that striping in the next few days. But they need to get in there and fix the drainage in the front. So, I could call them tomorrow and find out exactly.
And I can address that a little bit.
Oh, okay.
The, you know, of course, we have to make sure everything's signed off on, and everything's good. That, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to move in before everything's finished, but I think we're getting really close. So, but the plan is November the 12th is the target date. And so, we arrived at that date, and we want to make sure we had time to get everything finished. But also, we want to be able to, we don't want to use that the first day on a Monday or a Friday. Because if we, if our first day's on a Friday, when Monday comes, other people will forget the traffic pattern.
First day again, yeah.
So, we want to be able to have two or three days in a row. And then, if you pull in Election Day on the 5th, it's the same as having two Mondays, because Monday, and then Wednesday, because we're going to be out of school on Tuesday. So, we moved it to the 12th, so we'll make sure we get everything out. Ms. Martin is planning on making some videos to show parents, and we want to get the striping on the parking lot, so that she can be out there in the parking lot saying, this is where we've come in, this is the direction we're going to go. So, everyone will be very clear on that, because the last thing we want is a backup on Big Hill Avenue. Yeah, so we want to make sure that goes very smoothly.
Hopefully, we'll have some people out there those first few days going.
Yeah, we have our maintenance crew. Mr. Cash, it looks like he stepped back out to the lobby, but Mr. Cash and the maintenance crew, if you all remember, the first day, we had Boonsborough open. Everyone was scared about the traffic out there on, in front of Boonsborough. So, we had all of our maintenance guys out there with their vests on directing traffic. That's the plan, we have that same plan put in place for the Kindergarten Academy on 12th.
12th should be fine. They should be done with the contractual work by then, for sure.
Awesome.
Any other questions on the, okay. Next is the roof, and you can just click through these if you want, Jeannie. You can see that they're basically done with the roofing material, and they're really down to sheet metal work, coping, fascia, things of that nature. And basically, they'll prepare the sheet metal in the morning, bring it, get there about 9:30 or 10:00, and start putting it on. Could be down to a couple of weeks of sheet metal, and should be wrapping up. And here you can see the nice white material that's up on the three-story building. And I think the last couple, and see, there's the new sheet metal gutter work that they're hanging. So, and they're doing a really good job with, good, clean, nice gray color.
It's working out well, wouldn't it? Winter's coming.
Any questions on the high school roof?
So, you think about two weeks and they're done? Is that what you said? About?
Yes, yes. Yeah, yeah. They should definitely be done before the next board meeting. They'll probably get down to a lot of minor details that, the major work, day in and day out, probably done in a couple of weeks, coming back and buttoning stuff up, maybe up till the next board meeting. No other questions? I'd like, you all had, you all the board, had some good ideas last time about the schematics that we went over. And of course, I've had some more discussions with Mr. Gillum and administration. We subsequently had a meeting with KDE, because they like to have meetings, and they like to throw up obstacles to us. But, so we talked about the BG1s. That's why you, and maybe Mr. Gillum's already shared some of this with you, and why you're redoing your BG1s. So, we haven't, we haven't even been able to submit the schematic plans yet, because there's no project in Frankfurt yet, because there's no BG1. But in that time, we took into consideration some of the things that you all had discussed last time and brought up, and some more subsequent discussions I've had with Mr. Gillum. So, I'm going to go through these very quick, and if you have questions, we can talk along the way. And it's going to help if I can go up there and point like I usually do, so I'll go up there, and I'll talk about it. This is the Berea site, of course. Mentalist industrial road. I know, Mr. Gillum, you've seen this, sent an email from the Transportation Department. At this point, they say we don't have enough sightline, pretty much anywhere along there, to put a road on, to Mentalist Road. We're going to look into that, more discussions. Is there anyplace else we can locate it? There's not really many good places. So, that's a conversation we're going to have to have. So, in your BG1 that you're approving tonight, there is no funds from Kentucky Department, or Transportation reimbursing you for anything, because the road's not even going to be a part of the schematic that I sent to the state. So, this road that you were presenting last time, we'll cut that off. For this schematic that we're sending to Frankfurt, we're going to go ahead and get their schematic approval. If we can come back between now and design development, and have some more discussions and figure this all out, we can put this road back in, in accordance with whatever Transportation says, and we can revise the BG1 to show the reimbursement. But I wanted to mention that, because the schematic will take that connection off to Mentalist Road.
But that's not going to impact anything that we're really doing.
No, because that's something.
Our primary access.
That's right. You still have, this was always designed originally as the primary access. This was going to be more of a convenience factor. And there's still plenty of access in front of it over here.
And let me hit that as well. You can chime in, Tony, as you got, we're talking about that entrance over there onto Mentalist Road out the back. The issue there is that road is still a 55 mile per hour zone, and it'd be rough to meet somebody at 55. But for whatever reason, it is a 55 mile an hour zone. And there are different, there are established sight distances. You have to, you have to have so many feet from an entrance to a corner, or to a blind corner, curve or whatever. And there's not enough distance from there for a 55 mile an hour zone. So, there's a couple of things that they can, that the state can do. They can obviously widen the road, change the road, take out a curve, but they can just simply reduce that, make that a 35 mile an hour school zone, which is what you see in a lot of areas, you know, they reduce the thing. So, there's a lot of avenues that we can take on that, and we'll address that later. But it's not going to impact our project at all here, because our access is still.
Right. That's right, that's right. So, the immediate process that we're going to take is getting schematic approved. I don't want to say the KDE doesn't care about this, but if we don't show it to them, they can still give a schematic approval on the building and our site orientation. So, that's Mentalist, of course, industrial road. We talked about the entries here. Oh, perfect, perfect, perfect is what I want to do. This really hasn't changed from what we discussed at schematic. So, the main entry, as you come in, you come, you look over, and you'll see the main entry. So, but what we have done, click to the next slide. This, I'm going to blow this up for you, because I know at this scale, it's probably hard for you to see. But we have, this is the sheet that we will submit to KDE. That will show all your spaces and your efficiencies, things of that nature. And you can, I forgot, you're so good at that, Jeannie. I could have just had you load it for me. But you can click to the next one if you want. This blows up the gymnasium. We talked about concessions last time. So, we've widened the lobby in this direction a little bit, and added concessions in this area. This concession is about the size of like McCaw or Ferristown. You'll have ice scene, three-compartments scene, an area for display, colas, and things of that nature, a counter, and a phone, a door, a counter door that you can bring down.
To lock you.
Yes, to lock it, yeah, the locking door, and a lock here, right outside the bathrooms. Of course, bring it out here, because a lot of times, there'll be furniture and things out here. People can come out and enjoy their sodas without bringing it back in here. The other thing that we discussed with Mr. Gillum a few days later was adding kind of a kitchen serving area, so that events could be held in here. Not, this isn't concessions, you know. This isn't somebody watching a game or archery and getting a coke and leaving it in here. This is where you have an event where you maybe roll out tarps onto the floor, and there's tables set up, things of that nature. But you've got a serving kitchen in here, and of course, if you all are okay with this, I should click on. Y'all are approving anything tonight. You can tell me you don't like something if you are, but we're not reapproving the schematic. If you all are okay with this, Mr. Anderson will decide on what kind of selections of food service equipment to put in there, ovens, conby ovens, things of that nature. But it will also have a three-compartments scene, a regular scene, counter, folding door things of that nature. Kind of more like a church serving.
And supposed to be a church.
Similar to what we saw at the separation.
Right, yeah, I think that trip that you all took, kind of.
Adding more work for you.
That's okay, that's okay. The BG1 went up too.
Right. But we got great ideas.
Oh, I love it, yeah. I mean, that's collaboration.
Plus two, it's there, so later on, if, you know, if Mr. Anderson wanted to somehow incorporate serving food to the students, or, you know, whatever that looks like for him, it's there.
Showing this area, again, really nothing changed in this area. You've got your industrial, maintenance, health, culinary, welding, and the classrooms associated with them, the restrooms, engineering, diesel lab, all the associated storage tools and mechanical. So, I think the next slide just shows a, kind of a blow, I didn't blow this up much last time, but you can see at each place with a corridor wide, you have an office that's double-sided, and a classroom that's double-sided. And this widens up, so that as people go in and out, you know, they have a little more elbow room. I know Mr. Gillum stressed that throughout, having a wide corridor when there's a lot of traffic, kind of open it up. And there'll be something in the flooring and ceiling finishes, you know, something there as well, like coffered ceilings or something like that. Any question on the floor plan? Like I said, the shops and things stayed pretty much like they did before. This goes back to a sheet, and I know this is, I'm gonna blow this up for you. This is the sheet that we'll submit on your all's behalf to the Kentucky Department of Education. This is a 3D view, which is very digitized. I told you all last time, we've got a Pixar quality rendering guy that will come in. This is just taking the software we're having and projecting it three dimensionally. We did, you all talked about especially at Richmond raising this up a little bit. We raised it up a little bit here too, so we're a couple of feet taller than we were for this. We're playing with some different ideas on this very, the plain wall, so, but we've got some work to do there. Right now, we've just put the name there. And if you see career technology and area technology, we're gonna get that straight with however you all wanna call it. KDE, the one thing they talked, is they're referring to Berea as career technology and they're referring to Richmond as area technology. Now, that mean we can't put career technology on the building in Richmond, whatever we wanna do. You can see these taller areas here, so you can go to the next slide. So, this is a sheet that we'll send, you can see these raised areas, this is a straight on elevation. You can go to the next slide, this is the two-dimensional black and white. You can see the front entry there has been raised up. No, that's good, you can go to the next one, the colors are better anyway. Here, you can see a three-dimensional view of what's happening here. Those labs, the smaller labs will have raised area there with lots of translucent light coming in. These are cow wall panels like you see in the gym at Ferristown or Cottle. Right there at Ferristown, across, you know, the parking lot there. A little more technology looking, a little more industrial looking. But, there are still clear glass windows at eye level as you look across. But, then larger, you know, when the sun hits it, it's kind of transfused a little bit. Next picture is more around to the front. Again, we're playing with this, not quite satisfied with that yet. But, this is the view that you will get coming, as you're coming to it. Of course, it's about 30 feet in the air. Next picture, oh, that was the next picture, there's a little bit more of a blow up of that. And we're really cleaning these up and sharpening these lines. You know, we got some things to do here, we got some rich colors. But, this starts to show you the form of the building.
Tony, on the inside, one of the things that I really liked about Laurel County, are there glass to be able to look into the classrooms? Or are those walls solid with just glass doors? Have you all got that far?
Well, I'll tell you what, Richmond is similar, so when I push forward, can I talk about that one?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because we can go back to Berea.
No, that's fine.
But, good question, I wanna make sure I understand where you're talking about too.
Okay.
Good question. Is there anything else on Berea there? Okay, so that's the last one. So, any thoughts or questions about the concessions, serving? These colors of the brick and roof are intended at this point, it'll be our intention to match Ferristown.
Well, that was my question, so it's gonna be the same color scheme as Ferristown.
Yeah, so as bad as these colors appear here, just imagine the. Yeah, just imagine the light tan color brick that they have and then the browner color brick and then the bronze colored, bronze brown colored roof. That will be the colors that.
And all of the blue is just glass.
It's showing through to the inside and that's where the soft, that's where we have problems with the software. You're actually looking through the interior and the blue's just showing up on its own.
Do we have to do bulletproof glass?
You do not have to. It's certainly a topic of discussion. In fact, KDE will require that you, that we look at SEPTED again, Prime Prevention Through Environmental Design, for your design development, and we can start talking about those questions. It's not required, it's required that you look at the questions for SEPTED and figure out how you wanna handle safety here. It's a big issue, big question. Bulletproof glass, it ranges from a half inch thick to four inches thick. And of course, extremely expensive. And even the stuff that's four inches thick, depending on what kind of apparatus you have, you can eventually get through it.
I have a question about all the windows with efficiency for heating and cooling. Are they made to, I mean, like, I've got a big window in my building and heat comes in, the air conditioner goes on.
I would not call this lobby energy efficient.
The lobby, what about the rooms?
Uh, no, these are insulated cow wall panels, yeah, these are all insulated. And 75% of the room or more is gonna have very insulated or other interior walls. And the roof is gonna have insulation on it to stick. You know, the cow wall panels, they're not like a one foot six inch wall. You know, there is some efficiency, you know, I won't say that it's gonna be as efficient as, you know, one foot six inch thick wall with two and a half inches of insulation in it. But, then there's the aesthetic, you know, there's studies that say natural light help you more. So, you walk into the lab and classroom area and see, and I say lab.
Yeah, I like the natural light, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, you know, just the windows are made so much different now, you know, you don't stand still and feel the cold outside, so that's what I'm saying.
Well, now, these are gonna be, I mean, we could look at even triple pane glass, but these, of course, will be double pane glass with maybe arid on inside or something like that. And the way that you take care of that cold inside the glass is also to thrust heat and hot and cold air right at the glass surface, and that creates another layer of air which helps your insulation. So, and we would definitely do that here.
Now, when we walk in both of these centers, you know how we have to have like that second?
Vestabule?
Yes. Well, we have to do that here as well.
And I'll show you that, I'll shoot. So, we're gonna talk about glass in the classrooms and I'll show you the airlock.
Did we discuss having like the maintenance room, how they had the maintenance room there? That was actually utilized there?
Yeah, we have not.
No, we talked about that.
We haven't, however, if you'll notice, the industrial maintenance classroom is.
I'm sorry, go back.
You see the mechanical room right there outside the gym?
Yes.
The, that light green, bluish green is the industrial maintenance program.
Oh, well, now, we're at the, yeah, I guess, go, if you don't mind, back up to the, one of the, the enlarged Berea plant, back up to, you probably know the area on the screen. Probably about the second enlarged plant.
So, we don't have that incorporated specifically?
I'm sorry, you can go back. Industrial maintenance. That's all right.
Right there.
Industrial, and you can go one more. One more. Industrial maintenance is right here, this is the gymnasium as you walk back through the double set of doors and go to here. Is that the, yeah, industrial maintenance right here, and it has its own tools.
Yeah, the mechanical room, the one at the center in Laurel County, they had actually incorporated that mechanical room and made it accessible into the classroom.
Oh, okay.
It was a learning center.
It was a learning center.
Yeah, it was neat.
And this mechanical room right now is, once we get past this stage, we bring the mechanical electrical engineers in, and we're gonna ask them how much room they need. Of course, if you remember, we have a, we're gonna have a mezzanine here like we do in a lot of the schools where a lot of the heat pumps and equipment can sit up on mezzanine, easy access. There'll be stairs to get up there, not a ship's ladder, you know, nice enough stairs. They need to tell us how big this is, but the way we've set this up, so this mechanical, if it needs to grow out here, it has to grow out to here. But, for what you're discussing, we can put a door up there, you know, we can make a safe entry into there and not someone not walking into a bunch of pipes and things like that and make that part of their access. We'll do that.
We should add this.
I'll go ahead, I mean, it's a little bit. So, yeah, we'll move down to Richmond, what was it, the two, Vestabule and glass for the, glass into the classroom, things like that. So, this again, for Richmond, this is the sheet we'll be submitting, has all the efficiencies, kind of all the boring stuff here, plus the more exciting stuff. If we go to the next slide, this is a blow up of this area. See, we, there's an airlock right here, there's a double set of doors and there's a minimum amount of space that you have to have for wheelchair, handicap accessibility. So, that's an airlock. So, that's energy efficient right there in the lobby. And I didn't mean to be so light about the lobby efficiency. Obviously, light, you know, glass will never match, you know, a thick wall of insulation. But, you know, there's the aesthetic qualities in part two, but, you know, they're somewhere between, you know, a little bit of light and prison, you know, so you put a lot of, put a lot of light in the lobby especially. I think it helps the aesthetic of it as well. So, there's the Vestabule. This lobby at Richmond's just a little bit bigger, the concession is the same size and the serving is the same size, but, so those two things are added equally at both centers. Glass, the marketing, oh, sorry. The marketing is set up so that when you come in here, there's like window shopping display all the way around here. How much of a platform we build and whether there's doors and walls, that's all kind of to be developed. But, when you walk in, you can automatically see all the glass. We may extend this glass back to here. One of the ideas there being that can marketing, you know, collaborate with the rest of the school and promote what the school is doing, as well as other things. So, administrative, CTE, the start, these are a little, the program's a little bit different. So, this area looks a little bit different. The gym and serving, if we go to the next slide, you can see that this area is a little different, it's not industrial maintenance, but it's construction tech electrical. I mean, if we wanted to put, if this wall goes out to here, we can still add a door there if we felt, because there'll be large transformer, you know, equipment in here and switch here. So, there could still be some advantage to put the door there for learning potential. But, it's construction tech here, but it happens to just be about the same size, so it works the same floor plan. But, the storage and parts are a little bit different. And I think I showed you all before that each one of these larger labs over here has their own individual restroom in it. Now, the question for glass, the way these are set up, to get the classroom set up where you can close it off to here and use it as a standard classroom or close it off to here and it becomes a part of the CAD and then have the office right here, we put them between the hallway and the lab. And we've done it other ways where the classroom ends up back here. Or there's no corridor here, but even then, you're walking through your classroom to get to the lab, which nobody really likes that, or you have to walk through the lab to get to the classroom. And in that case, if your lab were out on the corridor, you could put some windows to see into the lab. In this design, and if we need to discuss this, there's no windows from here to see into any of these labs.
But, there's windows. But, there's windows from the classroom into the lab.
Oh, yes, yes, every one of the classrooms has, and I'm sorry, maybe that's where.
No, no, no.
As much as possible, we've put classrooms, I'm sorry, windows from the classrooms into the labs.
Well, I think it was helpful, you know, we observed the teachers, you know, they might be working here with someone, but yet they had students here in the lab.
Yes.
And then, we could see also walking through the hallway, and I don't know if that would be a distraction or not. But, I think for teachers, it's important to be able to, you know, have eyes in both places as you've got students working independently in both places. So, that makes it helpful.
Okay, well.
To the hallway.
Would you also like to see, now, I will say the offices are set up, and I don't think I had another blow up, but the offices have windows just about, so a teacher could stand right there in their office and have both doors open, and there'll be a window there and there'll be a window from somebody walking down the hall, and then there's a window into the lab. So, they can sit in their office and see in three directions. Now, they can't see back here. But, all they have to do, any one of these teachers, all they have to do is step out their office door. They've got, they've got a sideline all the way down from the front door to the end of the building.
So, you weren't windows in the hallway?
No, no, I just wanted to make sure that it was, there were, we had, they had windows in the hallway, but more importantly, they could see, the teachers could see from the class area into the lab.
Yeah.
And so, it gave them, you know, I just think it would be helpful.
From their office, can they see into the classroom?
Yes. Oh, no, not into the classroom. And we could make that happen, we could make that happen.
You don't think that there needs to be some privacy to an office?
Well, we'll put blinds on every window, and the door can be solid like those doors. The idea is that when the class, when the bells ring, they open the doors and there's one, you know, all around their office, there's transparency. They can walk, they can walk through to here and be in the corridor and have vision all the way up and down the corridor. They can walk back through here and be in the classroom, or they can see that stretch of corridor right there. And they're walking through their office, not kind of weaving through the kids who are coming in and out of that corridor.
I guess just where these are not traditional classrooms, are the teachers ever in their office when the kids would be in the classroom or in the lab?
There'd probably be a protocol, there'd be a masculinity protocol.
Yeah, I don't really know how it works.
It's rare, it would be rare, yeah, for them to be in their, in the office space while.
I mean, as long as we've got it to where the teachers can have their eyes on their kids all the time, however, whatever that looks like.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, you're fine.
And in both cases, the door's just right around, you're talking about walking out this door and you see right into the classroom, and as you walk out the other edge, you can see right into the classroom. So, that was the Vestabule and the glass. So, right now, no glass into the corridor.
And if anything, and let me get that, just to put the thought out here. You know, one of the things that we had talked about is if you think of Ferristown and Cottle, when you're in those, when you're in the pods there, they're, they have glass into those classrooms on it, but it's above, you know, I guess it's about six feet in the air and it's that top part of there. Gives it more of an open feel, but still, it doesn't create a.
Distraction.
Distraction for the, and you also can use the wall space. See, that's one thing that you have to think about. Every time you have a window or a door, you're losing that wall space and, which is, you know, essentially student workspace, you know, so.
I do like that idea because one of the things I took away from the facility we were at was it was so light, there was so much natural light, it seemed so open. So, that concept, I think, is very killing.
That gives you that feel quite a bit, you know, both in the classroom and in the hallway as well, so.
I'm glad we ended up back on the slide, just, I did wanna clarify, we've already kind of almost taken the welding shop up to design development phase. And they wanted 25 welding moves and several lockers and a stair up to the storage mezzanine above. And again, it comes back to that wall space, that exterior wall space. And we're already over kind of the CTE square footage amount, not by much, but we had to take up so much of the wall space. That's the one lab that does not have a window from the classroom to the lab. But, he knows that, Mr. Benson, of course, he'll be at Richmond and one of these will be in Berea. But, of course, again, from the office there's windows, they'll just, you know, they'll have to be. And what, basically what he said, he said, "That's okay, if they're out there, I'm out there." But, I didn't want you to walk into the one. So, the welding lab is the only one that doesn't have one, two windows, big windows looking out. So, go in, so this is the boring sheet, they'll go to KDE, let's go to the next sheet.
On the floor plan real quick, you may wanna go back because we talked about that law and justice law and public safety and we plugged it in there.
Yay.
I missed the big one there, then, yeah, go back to.
Yeah, that room wasn't there.
Yeah, and you'll see this on your BG1 as well. This was a big white blank space that said "Future," and that's another one of the things. Let's go ahead and do that, so your BG1 includes a base two.
Thank you for listening, guys. We appreciate that.
For part of our motto. Now, just something we haven't talked about yet is, we, CTE does not have a detailed breakdown of this type of space, you know, and with what's going on at EKU in Madison County, you all have, you know, this is kind of a Madison County thing. So, we set it up like it was one of the other labs. It will have its own classroom, it will have its own office, and it'll have a storage room and then a large area for setting up mats and things of that nature. So, this one is a new two, I think, we don't have to have a motion, but if you have any objection. You have not seen that yet, and of course, it just fills in that space and has its doors off the corridor. I'm glad you observed that. Got it in there, just forgot to talk about it.
I'm not gonna do any shooting.
We'll go on to the next one, that's the sheet KDE did. These are just the two-dimensional black and white renderings of KDE. We'll see here, this is up to 30 feet now.
So, we went up like that?
Yes, this would, that is probably, yeah, that was another one of the discussions about. And I've got a site plan too, yeah, I've got a site plan as well that shows it reoriented. And this probably went up maybe 10 feet, something like that. And we changed it around a little bit, but we could look at a better view of that as well. We'll go on, that's glass and a canopy, that's looking down the side, you know, Richmond's quite a bit longer than the other one. That's looking down the side, you know, Richmond's quite a bit longer than the other one. But we can go to the next view, yeah, we want to go to the next view, start getting some color. So here's three dimensional, so you can see how this becomes more of a tower here, which I think is great. I mean, I like the idea and how it looks and what's going on here. So I did separate it from, the other one just had a long sloping roof to cover this area back here. Here, we've, since we made that a tower, we made, we put these sloped roofs over those other areas. So more kind of mimics what's going on back through in this direction. Again, the colors, well, this is really digitizing on the screen, but you can see we're playing with some things there. Here's the volume here, which I think is really, would be kind of slick and technical, you know, more like a corporate headquarters or something. Go to the next one. There's a, there's a, standing, we'll work on this a little longer, walking up to the building and kind of seeing this.
Since this one's not next to an existing school, we kind of have a little bit more freedom with color schemes. We're not married to an existing building.
Right, that's right, that's right. And right now, you see some grays and red, red brick and gray brick. We can do, we can look at lots of different colors.
I think that's probably a good view of the, of the feel that you'll get in front of that. Because we did want to raise that, just because of the size of this Richmond, the things going back a little more, we want to make sure that we. And also considering the buildings around it as well, you know, we want, we, we want this building to stand out on that, that's, there's no question about that, so.
And I have, and you can go on to the next one, see what I've got next. Oh, and that's just, that's looking down the side. We'll probably, we'll probably bring the bargains up a little bit and the top of those down a little bit. But again, the same feel. That's looking straight on. Now, this is, this is the view kind of from the bypass. Now, a little bit closer than actually being out on the bypass. One thing that we have looked at on the bypass, it does actually go up, you know, between the Toyota and the bank. It actually goes up and then falls back down a little bit. So this will be above it today. I don't, I actually, I don't know if we'll see this part of it, you know, right, well, just note with the next, I hadn't really, at all, you think about it being flat, but now that you all raised the question, I drove by the road, I was like, "Yeah, you can see that, you can see that." And then I started thinking about the grade. And not bad, but, but this is going to be up there. We'll be able to see the top of this thing. And that's a big blow up of it right there. And what you, you're seeing some joyce in the background here, which you wouldn't actually be able to see that. Start being a little fuzzy there, but let's see what our next picture is. That's it. Go back to. Oh, those are, that's just, if they ask questions about what I did last time. All right, keep going. Want everybody, we'll stop it. So, what, anything else I've looked at?
Talk about the orientation of the building on the line.
We need to talk about the parking and how we're going to move the building.
Well, I'm, um.
You haven't got the.
Flip through there again.
Okay, we'll flip that.
Do you, do you have like a screen, like where you have all of me? Yeah, just flip back through there real quick. I loaded the site on there, I loaded it. Okay, well, just go, go the other direction down, we'll see if it comes up. Sorry about that. Okay, well, see, there it is. Okay, it's just, sorry, it's on the wrong side of my logo there. Okay, go back one more. Sorry, one more. This is what we were looking at last time. And the orientation of the building was a four mile road and of course, your Toyota plant right here. And y'all are very perceptive about, you know, being able to see this. The, the edge of the car lot's about right here, and this is just open field right here. And I know you're going to say, "Wait a minute, we talked about another proposal," and I want to discuss that too. So one of the things that, that we looked at was the next slide. Swinging this around so that it, you can see, in fact, you can see where that gap is right there. So that the building faces this way as you're driving, especially driving from this side of town around, you can start to see this, this large tower here. And here's, you know, parking all around this way, good, good buffer off the road, green space. We tried to push this out a little bit, but we started losing a lot of parking. You know, we, we can play with moving it forward a little bit, but right now, this is what we're showing, sending to KDE. Now, Mr. Gillum and I discussed, which I have, went on fall break and haven't had the opportunity to do yet, is, you know, this long side with, with the labs and the glass that we were looking at, it's a little bit more of a money shot. He was thinking about maybe can we rotate the whole building and show the whole, that whole front of the building in that direction. It's, it's a little long, you know, it does, but, but we can't, we could scoot it around there and, and get it around there. So we're going to do that study. For right now, what we send to KDE, we'll go ahead and do this. If you think about the floor plan, the entrance is, is from this direction. We're, we're parallel with Coles, you know, and this reps, so Coles is here, you know, the front of our face, Coles is probably back a little bit. But the entry is, is definitely in this direction. If we rotate that 90 degrees, you know, the front is facing in that, in that direction. So we would probably revisit the lobby area. I mean, it could work, formally it could work, you could have everybody park here and walk to that direction. But you know, should the front be facing the side, would really be the question. So we're going to study that between now and design development, I don't know if that, maybe two months when we come back. But during that time, I'll be meeting with you and, and looking at the possibility.
Instead of twisting it the whole way, can't you just move it just a little bit?
We could, yeah, you're talking about angling it like that. I, I mean, we could, and you, and you could still see it.
Because coming, coming on the bypass, coming from like the bus direction, it's laid down. You can't see anything from the bypass, the Toyota South, because you can't see down four miles.
Right, yeah, this is, there's no reason, you're right, you're right. Yeah, you have to get to here, but you see what we're getting at. But yes, we could, we could look at all of that, we can look at all of that. As in looking at, you're talking, just potentially, maybe paralleling it with this. And then also potentially having that as well. We could look at both of those.
So did you all like the turning that around a little bit?
It's already improved.
Yeah.
From when it was all the way up.
Sure, sure, sure.
Better parking.
This is already better.
Because the only way you're going to see it is coming down the bypass this way.
Right, without driving back in there, yes, yes. To see it from the bypass would be coming out this direction and around that. And we want to make it taller so you can.
Thoughts on anything?
I think it's much better.
I think it's much better. I think the important thing is people to know where the entrance is. And that we have convenient parking for visitors and things like that. So I, I like this.
Get some nice trees in here. So just go, we'll send it to KDE this way to get past this phase. Side orientation is not something that they really, I mean, they'll look at it, but if we come back at design development and say, "Hey, we changed the side orientation," it's not like saying, "Hey, we changed the sides of the welding shop."
So long as they don't hold us up anymore than they already have.
Correct.
Okay, so I guess that's your construction report. Now we need to move on to approving a BG1 for Brea CTC. Is that what you wanted to do?
Okay, the Brea CTC, as I said, you all had approved a BG1 before. I think most of the hangup was maybe, and you may be able to explain better, the, the financing side, that what, they wanted us, where the money was coming from?
Yes, if you all remember, you know, we're talking about multiple years of funding and, and parts that are escrowed and everything else. And we just, we had to sit down and meet with them and go through several things and then basically get them to commit to a specific, yes, we will give, we will, this is okay with us if we, if we put this much in this pot and this much in this identified. So we, we spelled all that out, so that's what's being reflected in those, in those two BG1s.
Yeah, so most of the architectural items on this hasn't really changed. It's, it's where the money's coming from that's, that's changed.
Okay.
Which really hasn't changed, it's just.
Move from one line to another.
Right, right.
Yes, and that's all it is.
To go from the left hand to the right.
Yes. We, yeah, that's correct.
So I'm entertaining a motion to approve the new BG1 for the Brea College Technology Center, College Career Technology Center, as presented. Motion by Ms. Rutherford, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Cobb, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. And going on in two, since same thing, approve the new BG1 for the Richmond Career Technology Center. Motion by Ms. Brock, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Burford, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Good.
Thank you, Tony.
You did well.
Thank you, Tony.
Finance report, Mr. Mark Woods. If you can get as entertaining as he was.
Your slides aren't doing as much fun.
Maybe we should go in front.
I have to pay for this slide.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. All right, we'll start with the finance report. As of September 30th, we ended with reconciled balance of $34,930,574.48. The reports that you saw on there, it is still up. We talked about this, it's been this way for a while. The funds that we were talking about having to shift around and maneuver for the BG1s, that's our capital funds. We've got two years' worth. We will be applying those on these projects. So that's what's driving our balance up as compared to prior years. Of the reconciled balance, we have $2,999,990.65 in investments. The rates range from 2.25 to 3.0. That balance is dwindling because those are CDs that we have had that are through our system with PFM where we could purchase, but we have to comply with the new state regulations and have to purchase from banks that have a presence in the state of Kentucky. I've been in contact with banks this week, talking to them about different financing options for the district. I'll be scheduling meetings with them. Our biggest section of money that'll be coming in will be our tax revenue. We'll be looking at a big chunk of that. The first check will probably be around the end of December. And so right now is a good time. We're starting to discuss all those plans and make plans of what's going to be best for the district investment wise so that we can maximize earnings and be within regulation on that. In your packet, you also had a balance sheet, revenue and expense report to look at for September 30th. We're on track with our revenues and expenditures at this time. Some of those, if you look at it, supplies, things of that nature, may look a little high at this point, but we buy all of our supplies up front and then use them throughout the year. So we spend, that's typical to spend a lot of that money up front. Again, we did talk, I did mention the taxes. We will notice our revenue lagging as compared to prior years a little bit because collections are delayed this year. So that's my finance report. Any questions?
Questions? Then we recommend a motion to approve the financial report as presented. So, oops. Motion by Ms. Brock, second by Ms. Burford, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Superintendent's report.
All right. I'll start off by saying that I had the honor and privilege of speaking to our Madison County Retired Teachers Association on September 11th. It's a wonderful group of people. And it's, it's interesting, as I look out over that crowd, there were folks that, that were, that, that I was a colleague with in the classroom. There were also folks in that group that taught me in the classroom as teachers when I was a student in Madison County. So it was a lot of fun to speak to that group. And as I said, I got to speak to them on September 11th, which is another thing I want to mention. We have our, Ferris Town Middle School has hosted the 9/11 Tunnels to Towers Traveling Museum this week. And that's been a wonderful community event. It's been a great opportunity for our students, and I think some of you guys had an opportunity to get out and see that. Just, just tremendous there. And we appreciate our Gear Up group that was sponsoring that and promoted that, along with some of our community partners. So it's very, very good. Speaking of Gear Up, I think at our, at our meeting in September, we recognized Gear Up Week. And so that was a, a good thing as well. And you heard our group from Clark Moores with the STEM Project sponsored through Gear Up. We're going to continue to hear a lot of positive things coming through Gear Up for the next few, next few years. We see our career centers, we continue to move forward with implementation there. And just a couple of things that I've been doing a little bit on the, on the side. Well, we mentioned our visit to, for everyone out there, you heard our visit the board made to the Laurel County Center for Innovation, which is a very innovative project that Laurel County took on. A lot of neat architectural ideas and programming ideas that we've gotten through that. That was a very good visit. Other things with our career centers, I had the opportunity to speak to our Brea Industrial Group at the Brea Industrial Appreciation Luncheon yesterday. Those folks were very excited about what we're doing as a district. And then today, we met along with some members from our, from both of our high schools, as well as Kentucky Tech, as well as Eastern Kentucky University, had representatives there today, meeting with a group, looking at work readiness for our community and specifically how we're going to continue to enhance our work-ready certification and preparing our students for the, for the work, work world and building those soft skills and work-ready skills that they need. So that was a very good meet, so you're going to hear more about that over the, over the coming months. On October the 8th, I met with our superintendent team task force group as they prepare. That is the group, you know, obviously I love working with them, but they are going to lead. Our board members have an invitation there, and a lot of our community members have an invitation to our strategic planning event on November the 12th. And that, that's going to be led by our superintendent team task force. So we, we gave that to them. Aaron Stewart provided some training for them on presentation skills and facilitation skills, as well as Gina Lakes. They've already been in that group as well that day, so looking for some good stuff out of them. Also, on October the 8th, I met with Michelle Burke. And I mentioned Michelle because Michelle is, she's one of our parents in Madison County, but she's one of our parent representatives on the Pressure Committee's Committee for Family Engagement. And with that meeting out of that as well, Pressure Committee's asked me to serve as a, as an administrative representative on that committee, so I agreed to do that. So a lot of, a lot of good things as we look for ways to engage more and more of our families in the, in the education process. We did our first full week of fall break, Ms. Cobb mentioned that earlier. And you also heard our calendar committee, we're getting, getting that together. And that's, with that committee, we have some representatives from MCEA here tonight, appreciate that. We have teacher representatives selected through that process to be on that committee. And we've obviously received a lot of compliments on that. And so, as you heard me say earlier, by January 1, we're hoping that this, this board will have our calendar for next year in the, in the hands of our people, if all goes well. Just prior to fall break, I conducted my first round of site visits in all of our schools, meeting with those principals. And so what I do there, I go in, take a couple of hours at each school, meet with the principals, get into classrooms, get in and out and see folks, then we go back and sit down and talk about. Ms. Hunter typically joins me for, for a portion of that, to talk about our, the, the instructional leadership that the principal's providing there. We talk about the things that, that, that we're doing as a school to, to move instruction forward and to, to just do the things that we need to be doing in the classroom. And I say that because, I mentioned that just as a report, so you kind of know how, what that process looks like. Because it takes me about three weeks to complete that because I can do about two a day. And then when you mesh in the other meetings and so forth that we have, it takes about three weeks to get that done. So I finished that just prior to fall break. But going in and out of classrooms, just seeing some really, really exciting things happening in Madison. You saw the, the instructional report and the test scores and the direction we're going in. I'm very pleased to say that. But I also want to point this out, and Mr. Rutherford was standing there with me the other night, Monday night, at our, at the district volleyball game. And as we're watching that district volleyball game, I had a parent come up to me. And the parent came up to me and was bragging on one of our schools and the, just the, the experience that their child was having with the teachers. And the, the one thing that. And the, the one thing, and the school that they were bragging on was Boonsborough, but doesn't matter which school, because I think you could say the same thing about every school in our district. But the thing that that parent really mentioned, that mentioned that really struck home to me, is they, they said, "Yeah, I can really tell that the teachers love children and the teachers love my child. And, and even when my child is not, not easy to love." And so that was, again, I think you can say that about every one of our classrooms, you know, every school that we have across our district. You know, our, our teachers really care, and our principals care, and they're out there doing everything they can for our, for our students. And that's what makes Madison County special, and it's what makes me proud to be the superintendent. That's my superintendent report.
Very good.
You've been busy.
It is nice to hear good feedback like that.
Yes. I was, you know, Mr. Rutherford can attest that I smiled from ear to ear when I turned the wall by.
It's about a 10-minute conversation.
Yeah, makes you feel good. Yeah, makes you feel good.
Okay, so now, as comments from the board, anybody have anything to share?
This weekend is the state band tournaments, and I believe both of our bands, from Southern and Central, will be competing. I had the opportunity to watch them both up at George Rogers, and to say that they were both impressive would be an understatement. And I think it's even more impressive how the community has rallied around Madison Central as they get prepared to represent Madison County in the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. And it's just amazing, there's been retirement homes doing chili suppers and businesses sponsoring and individuals, because it has taken a village. And the leadership from Madison Central, as far as the administration and there at the band has just, they've just done a phenomenal job. So we wish them luck for the weekend, Central and Southern. They, they represent us well, so we're excited. And can't wait for Thanksgiving to watch Macy's.
Yeah. Maybe Samantha will get the position to get to go down there and broadcast.
No, I wish.
Yeah. Well, he ain't put some pressure on.
I wish. I'd like to say that I was one of the ones that got to go to the 9/11 mobile exhibit, the Memorial Mobile Exhibit, and it was incredible. And one of the gentlemen that I talked to that works with the exhibit, they travel all over the country, and he told me a story tonight about our students and how he was so surprised. He said, "Usually we teach the students," but he said, "We taught the students, and then the students came back and taught adults as they came in tonight, and they got it all right." And he teared up. And he was surprised, overwhelmed, and extremely excited that our students were so well represented. And it made me proud. And of course, I was like, "Well, I'm on the board. I will be sure to tell everyone." So that made me extremely proud as well, and so we all should be so. But it was great. And I was at the clerk's office the other day, and they're getting ready, they had the layout of the cafeteria for voting, so how they're going to do the new machines and the voting in Boonsborough in the cafeteria. So that's exciting, that we have the new school and new opportunities to do that. But also, the last thing that I want to say is I'm really excited about the signage at Madison Central and the signage at Madison Middle. It is fantastic, and I thank you, Randy.
He did, oh, he got credit for something. Hey! Come over here and take your picture.
I've been asking for a year. No, I shouldn't have said that.
Okay. Anything else?
I have a few things. First thing is tomorrow night is Civil Creek's Fall Festival from 5:00 to 8:00. I know they're really excited. Went and saw Ms. Eaton yesterday, and she's really excited about that. Also, as Mr. Gillum talked about, the volleyball game between Central and Southern for district. Southern won, and they were very excited. It's first, best season they've had since 2006, so they're very excited about that. And also, I'd like to thank Mr. Neely for taking care of the Boonsborough sign. It looks great. You can see the sign, it lights up, it looks good. So thank you, Mr. Neely.
Just invaluable.
I'm trying to thank you something.
That's too edible, we may need to...
Should we be thanking Mr. Cash?
Now, Mr. Cash is next. He's got to have something. Okay.
We'll see if that opening at the, the traffic goes well at the...
Oh, yeah.
The traffic doesn't go well at Madison Kindergarten Academy. You're going to be...
Okay, so no other comments from the board. We'll move on to public comments. Do we have, we had a request, but they're not here.